1:30, so it's time to call to Oregon Yankel County Board of Commissioners informal work session for December 18th. And I'll just start with a work session. So Christian, you don't have to go first.
I do not.
Would your preference be to go first?
No.
Okay. So we'll start with our work session. Abishah Stone is here and we're going to review and discuss the quarterly update and introduce our new executive director. So why don't you guys, if you could join us at the table?
Sure.
Should we pull up a chair? Do we have another chair?
Do we have one?
Do you even borrow mine?
Justin, thank you sir.
He's gonna stand over you.
There's one right there. He's trying to make it up to me that he left me on the eve.
He's trying to make up to a lot of people.
So Abishah, you would introduce our new executive director?
Yeah, thank you for having us. So Eric Anderson is the new president of SED Core. He's been around in this area for a long time. I know some of you already know him, but I thought I would bring him with me and let him do his own introduction.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. Eric Anderson, I've been president of SED Core since November 5th. So I'm still on a little bit of a steep learning curve in some respects, but it has been, they invited me to come out and see some old friends from way back when. Well, not ever that old, we're still young. We were just kids. But I was commenting as we walked in here that kind of my last experience of this building was talking about the Newburgh County bypass and saying that it was a thrill a couple weeks ago to go on it for the first time. It was like, this is out, this is the road that we were spending so much time on. But I did work in the economic realization team for Governor Kolegoski. I covered this area in addition to the mid-coast and the, you know, western Willamette Valley. In the interim years, I've been in Pacific Power doing utility work and then I've been in Washington for a couple of years in Tacoma. And the SED Core job, P O open and my family, my dad's in Salem and it just seemed like a really good opportunity to head back to a region that I really enjoyed living in. Kind of feels like home to me. So I'm already kind of looking forward to diving in a little bit more than I have been. But it's just so much activity and nice diversity of communities to be working with too. Part of it was also having a really good team of folks in the office when I came down from the interviews. And Abishah and her colleagues do our business retention expansion work in the three counties. They're just a lot of energy, a lot of knowledge base, a lot of enthusiasm for the work we do. And sometimes those folks like me get a little cynical about things. So it's nice to have that checks and balances in our office.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you very much.
We feel really grateful to have Eric join the team. Also, like I was saying, he's very familiar with a lot of the partners in the area. He also served on the Ouidah Board as president just a few years ago, I think was.
Yeah, before we had staff. So this one, no one knows really, we had to do our own minutes and that kind of stuff. So we got good training.
And also sat on the SED Core Board for a while as well. So as we've been bringing Eric up to speed and/or he's been bringing us up to speed, we've been doing some work in Yankel County, kind of fulfilling some, some work, some promises, some obligations. One of them is we did in late November, host the first Economic Development Advisory Council meeting and we were really excited to have that come together. We had a representative from each community with the exception of Amity who was in transition. You're forgiven, Justin.
Thank you.
And we have engaged a few business owners and in the private industry side to join us in this activity. We are currently working on developing the committee for reviewing the grant program and invited Carrie to join us, Carrie Martin, to join us for that discussion. She gave us a background education and training on what has been going on with that grant program to date and then what her desires, hopes, expectations are going forward. As a reminder, I worked with Christian on developing the structure of that to make sure that we're kind of approaching it the way that we need to be. And we plan on having our next meeting in January. Our plan with Carrie at this point is to try to have the grants program open its normal cycle, so around the first of the year, January, February, and get that program up and running again. So we're working toward that pretty aggressively. We also recently, so just a few highlights because I know you received the report, recently hosted an opportunity zone training and we partnered with our friends at the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde who hosted that actually for us. We had some folks come out and educate us on the opportunity zone program. We had representatives from each community that has an opportunity zone. We also had some folks that are interested in building a fund. They were out in Polk County, working with some friends in Dallas on figuring out what the opportunities were there for building the fund. And as a follow-up, we'll be visiting with them, I have a meeting with them tomorrow to talk about opportunities here in McMinnville as well. So we are trying to help close that gap to make sure that each of these communities are educated about this opportunity around opportunity zones and that we are connecting them to folks who are interested in projects within those areas. So we're planning on hosting another training in February where we will bring in developers and investors and fund managers to try to help facilitate conversation and maybe sponsoring some ideas on how we might opportunist this opportunity in the area. Yeah. And then just a note I wanted to share with you all that was also in the report that I was recently accepted to the real Oregon statewide agricultural leadership program. It is the second iteration of the state having an agricultural leadership program. And I'm very excited to be representing Yankel County in that program. I'm also learning a lot about the statewide resources and making a lot of really good connections, so resources that we can bring back to this area as well. But I'm excited about participating and wanted to share that with you. As a follow-up, Commissioner Olson, you had asked me about some data regarding some of the companies that we're visiting. Commissioner Primazic and I talked about the best way to approach capturing that data. And we're really leaning into the CRM program that we've invested in to be building in this, so it's a centralized data management system. We're building in all of the data for the businesses and the communities that we serve in a regional way and then hopefully being able to pull exactly that kind of data out of the reports, out of the system. And as we're, we are learning this system now, so as we, literally, as we learn it, I will bring some iterations of reports to this group and you can let me know what it is you're looking for, what you're looking to understand and how we can, how we can build that better.
Abishah, the, to me, I think one of the most important things about what you guys would do would be business retention and local startups. So can you give us some concrete information about how you can go about helping a business stay in business in Yankel County?
Sure. I think one good example is we have a business just outside of Newburgh who does food manufacturing, food production. And they are outside of the U G B. They are not able to connect to the sewer and wastewater system. And they are struggling to expand while building out their own wastewater system. So they have a vision for the future and they are now working with engineers and the city to figure out the best way to achieve that goal. So we partner with them. We are bringing together a conversation in January with the Regional Solutions Team, so the statewide regional solutions team, to identify the best direction and the best support mechanisms for them. We have a meeting this Friday with D E Q. So we help to set up these meetings with D E Q to identify things that they can do kind of in an interim process. We also set up two separate meetings with dairy farmers who can process their wastewater for them as a bridge step to them building out their own system. So we connect businesses to, so kind of that B to B work, right? Business to business to help manage their supply chain and their waste stream. We connect them to the partners. So if maybe they don't have a contact at D E Q or one of those partners, so that they can be working directly to solve their problem. And then we look, we try to advocate at that regional level and connect them to groups such as the regional solutions. So this is a conversation that we had with them maybe three weeks ago, Eric, if you can tell me what time you have. And between that mark and today, we have helped propel them in the right direction significantly. And they are at that place where they're saying, is this the right location for us? Can we stay here? Can we grow here? Do we have the support that we need to problem solve as we're trying to figure this out or should we be relocating somewhere else? And those are the conversations that they're having and we're saying, let's work through this, let's see what we can do. Let's, let's not be beholden to what one person told us, let's start asking more questions.
If I could add maybe on what we're trying to do around startup and entrepreneurship too, the, there are a couple of ongoing projects that are just now sort of coming to fruition. One being the Willamette, Mid Valley, Mid Willamette Valley Venture Catalyst, which is an opportunity we have through the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network. And that will allow us to have a professional venture position at Oregon Entrepreneur Network, but to be housed in the region, probably spend some time co-located at the EDP here in McMinnville as well as our office and other places. And that person will be mostly targeting traded sector businesses, but startup businesses and early growth businesses that are looking for access to capital, particularly as a venture opportunities, equity opportunities. We've got a match set up from the Murdoch Foundation already for that, for a three-year match. So we've gathered up our local match to that. And then we also have, hopefully, the possibility of some money coming through an entrepreneur, a rural entrepreneurship grant program that Senator Rowland is looking to bring forth in the legislative session. That would provide ultimately SED Core along with two of our similar type of partner organizations around the state. For us, it'd be $200,000 if we had a match. We've already got the match in place and that would be to continue that venture catalyst program. So having, having access to someone that would actually be meeting with businesses and locating in the communities that we serve, recognizing that a lot of our communities are looking beyond just traded sector, particularly in smaller communities where they are looking at main street businesses and others. We're also trying to develop this network from the launch Mid Valley. And that's really just a, I won't say safety, that's the wrong word, but an umbrella of all the different resources that are out there so that we can be promoting for the three counties here, all the different business resources that are up for startups or expansions for entrepreneurs that have an idea how we can link businesses together. We have a meeting coming up with all the economic development folks from the area on January 22nd to kind of relaunch that program. Agree upon the details of how we want to work together on that, how we approach the university system. We have the Small Business Development Center following right now with Shemekita, but I think there's also resources that we may haven't identified and seen if they can combine through, you know, George Fox in Willamette and, you know, Linfield and, you know, OSU and some of the schools that, you know, through cooperative extension. So I think what we're hoping to provide is just a real sort of strong framework for business development opportunities and startup and entrepreneurship opportunities. And I think we're frankly a little lagging in that. I think Southern Oregon and Central Oregon particularly have done a really good job of that over the last 10 years or so and think it's our time. So I've also reached out because when I was at Pacific Power, we funded So Ready's version in Southern Oregon and that conversion, Central Oregon had reached out to Pacific Power to see if they could give us a little bit of money for some of that too, for a three-year commitment. So we're trying to get some private sector dollars in there too. You know, I use the example of somewhere there's somebody that's at a farmer's market that's making new kettle chips. So how do we identify them and recognize that, hey, with a little bit of help, we might be able to get you the resources through OSU and some other things to get your business to a bigger market.
And I hope what you're leaning from what Eric is saying too is that we are creating a regional approach to these things. We are working very hard with all of our three county partners to create a regional approach to this so that we're leveraging the efforts across those borders. And it's been very successful. And we've gotten a lot of buy-in on how to build a program within the region. So we're really excited about it.
And that's what I've told, and I'm board, Executive Council rather, is that, and not board, I'm really interested in trying to find three county projects, not, you know, projects in each county, you know, how we can identify some things that are common to the area because there's so many industries and opportunities and I think we can all build from each other on that. And I think we're stronger if we can look at the Mid Valley in a way that, you know, has those strengths of three counties and the business communities of three counties. So we did a little bit of that with the wine industry a few years ago and I think that's one of the things we're kind of looking at again too, is like what can we do to try to strengthen that a bit, you know, to, you know, value-added agriculture and food and so that's the exciting part. Like we get to be entrepreneurial too.
Christian, are there any other questions?
No, yeah, yeah.
Well, nice to have you with us.
The Cruz up there because they've got money for that kind of project.
They're on my list.
I think a meeting with USDA.
Yeah, Jill Rees is who you want to talk to.
Yes.
And she has that piece and she'd be a good one. Yeah, you know, Moncin Cruz wants to make sense.
No, we do not. We do not. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Welcome to see you again.
Thank you for working with me.
Thank you very much. Happy Christmas. Good to see you all. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thanks.
Thank you for your punctuality.
At least, at least I had it in here so that we were early.
Maybe how early gives me, I can spread that out over me a couple minutes late all the time. My average will stick.
Do we want to wait for Shane or do we want to, thanks.
Thank you very much.
My address.
Thank you. I think we can come back.
Do we want to come back to Shane?
We could.
Okay. So let's move on to item C, which is the preliminary consent agenda. Is there anything on her issues that you'd like to pull off for Thursday?
I'm not sure I have all the information back and in my mind that we just formed everything for Thursday.
Okay, well, we don't need a motion at this point.
Oh, I already have nine reasons.
Just a, just a heads up, thumbs up, nod of the head. Right there.
Good with me.
All good?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to item D, which is the non-consent agenda items and other topics for discussion. And what we would add to the consent agenda that we'll leave them off, and that is item D line, could you can address the ratification or the consideration of ratifying Yankel County, Yankel County Sheriff and Teemster's Local 223 collective bargaining agreement, which would be effective January 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. So I've got my copy and you have yours? So Christian, did you want to just walk us through the main changes?
Yeah, so we've concluded negotiations with the union. The Teemsters Union represents the bargaining employees in the sheriff's office. They have ratified the new agreement. What I've handed out to you are a summary of the actual changes that were made to the agreement. And if you have any questions, as I quickly tick through those, we can discuss them. There was a change made in section two of the agreement to bring it into compliance with the recent US Supreme Court decision, the G M S, which was in about union dues and fair share payments. So that's reflected in section two. In section five, we made a slight change to some language that related to the county furnishing firearms or employees unlikely to carry personal firearms. There was some language that dated back to July of 1998. It was determined that we simply didn't have any employees in the union anymore that were impacted by that language. So as a cleanup, we went ahead and removed that language from the contract. In section 6.9, there were some revisions to the way that jail handles its voluntary overtime. And then we were also able to negotiate into the agreement some new language around allowing the jail to require mandatory overtime. They were having some challenges in filling some overtime shifts. This new language allows them to impose some mandatory overtime if those open shifts cannot be filled voluntarily. It gives them some greater flexibility when it comes to shifts during the summer. And as it relates to approving time off, making sure that we maintain the minimum necessary level of coverage in the jail. In article nine, made some slight changes to reflect the Oregon sick leave statute. And then article 12 is the compensation section. That's where we were ultimately able to settle with the union within the range that had been previously discussed with the board in executive session. So that's reflected in a, in section 12, 6% increase in January, market adjustment, and then followed by 6% adjustment and a CPI on July 1 of 1920 and 21.
To clarify, not CPI, but a...
Sorry. What did I say? Sorry.
Take a half percent.
2% cost of living adjustment. Thank you.
For eight and a half percent across?
Correct, for those three years. And then in article 15, we've added some language clarifying some timelines around requests remediation if we're in the grievance process. There hadn't been a timeline in there before, so there is now. And then article 20 typically reflects the duration of the, of the new agreement. It would be a three and a half year agreement starting in January of 2019 or upon execution, whichever is later, and then continuing through June 30th of 2022. So those were the extent of the changes. As I said, the union has voted and ratified our proposal. So the next step would be for the board to consider this and it was scheduled to be on your agenda for Thursday. The other item on the non-consent agenda is related to this, which is the board's consideration of extending the provisions of the new contract to associated non-bargaining employees, which is something the board has traditionally done with these, with these agreements.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
For the sheriff or Christian?
The non-bargaining piece is one that I've been wondering, who do we hire there?
That would be your sergeants, captains, this guy over here.
How many employees? Up to approximately?
Seventeen?
Yeah, it's like seventeen or eighteen.
The purpose of this increase is primarily because of losing people to local jurisdictions?
Yeah, I mean, there was, there's a market adjustment reflected in here, which, which is meant to try and address some of the disparity that we saw when we did an analysis of similar positions in, 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 in Newburgh and other areas. So it is, it is an effort to address the staffing challenges and the retention challenges that the sheriff is facing.
That same disparity exists across the board or is it primarily on?
As far as retention and hiring?
Well, yeah, the disparity in pay is what I was...
It's pretty much across the board. We, our organization is, we don't have separate steps between a jail facility when it comes to a deputy versus patrol there. A handful of counties have different levels. If you're in a jail, you're on one level, if you're on patrol, you're on another. So ours is basically straight across the board because we move people between divisions. So yeah, it's pretty much across the board.
So are we okay with moving this to the consent agenda? Okay. All right, so we can do items D, one and two on the consent agenda. Thank you, Christian, for working on this and Sheriff, thank you for being here to discuss this. Okay, we can move on to item D3. And that was something that I'd like to discuss and that's an illegal dumping reward sign concept. I think we've seen more and more illegal dumping on rural roads. And one of the things we're finding out is that our public works staff are having to go out and pick up mattresses and box springs and all manner of majorly large items and huge dumps all over the county. And I think that, you know, we're already sure it's staffed as it is, or let's just say, we, we have a lot to do out of public work. So I thought, I, so I looked around at some of the other programs throughout the country. They have all different kinds, basically, if you, if you, and I'll just show you an example of a, of a sign that you can pass around, where basically you're, you're asking people to report what they've seen. Everybody's got a cell phone and I think it would probably make it one of those things where people would be less likely to dump stuff if they think someone could come around the corner and snap a picture of their parking, of their license plate. And also if we make it a significant amount, then there's impetus for people to report what they do see. For some reason, there's an uptick in this and, I don't know, I had talked to John about this a long time ago and I know that he would be interested in, and just something for us to think about and maybe have public works look at. I might cut down on some of their work and some of this would actually fund them having to send people out. It's, you know, it's man hours to go out and pick this stuff up and it takes them off the, off the other things that need to be done. So, you know, Sacramento County, for instance, has an app. They snap the photo and they send the information using a 311. We've got signs up there that, that offer reward money. And, you know, we've got a lot of rural property, a lot of rural roads that could stand to see a little less illegal dumping. So I don't know what your interest is in pursuing this going forward and talking to public works about this, but just something for us to think about.
I, I think it's worth, worth definitely exploring more. Anything that can make it so we don't have illegal dumping, I think is very valuable. I think what really, what interests me is, is coming up with a good set. If we move forward with this kind of good set, how we really measure the success of this program. I mean, what do we cover? How many rewards do we give out? What does it, what does it mean? And if, I think with that all could be worked into an, I'm for moving forward, or at least discussing it further.
So could we maybe talk to...
You better, you better get something in place else when you shut down that landfill, you're going to see dumping all over this county and it's not going to be pretty, so...
And that's sort of getting ahead of what we are potentially going to see because it's easier to just dump stuff alongside a road. It's cheaper. And if we don't have another option, where else is it going to be?
I think it's a good idea.
Well, if I'm here in touch to the board, you know, I could get with John and his team and we can start pulling together some samples, maybe work on a policy or, or an early draft.
Maybe just...
What do they say?
I think there is already some process for samples there.
So we can look at that.
There's a state, there's a state law and then there's county ordinance. So this is just adding some teeth to both of those things. Anyway.
All right.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. The next thing I wanted to bring up, kind of keep keeping this, Ken, down the road is talking about the MOU on the trail maintenance and...
And I told you I'd have it for you last Tuesday and it, Ken has it with his attorney, they drafted a document that he's going to sign that would specify what he's willing to do, which is basically based on the values of the price for maintenance that we've gotten from the trails around the country. He's putting a number in there, I think it was up to $4,500 a year for that three mile stretch because based on the numbers we had, it was anywhere from 12 to 13 hundred dollars a mile for the ongoing maintenance of the trail. He's offered to do that in perpetuity and so he's just putting what his expectation is, what he's had by that. So he has that before his attorney, that he will provide that to the, to the county as his commitment for that three, three mile section.
Because I think, I'd like to know that we have some say in what that MOU is going to look like. So it's not one-sided where we get to...
He's going to provide it. You have to obviously accept it, that that's, this is how he's going about it. So there's no ambiguity about what he's offering or what your expectation would be from him.
Yeah, just so that we get to actually take a look at that and say, is this something that's going to work for the county going forward? And there's some give and take there?
Yeah. Based on what we got, this is more than what normally would have cost, but he's operating to do that or is. Anyway.
And that will be roughly when?
Well, since he gets it back from his attorney.
And that, we have an idea. We know how Chinese are, I mean, in China.
Yeah.
I'll have one in class this afternoon?
When the soccer season's over.
When the what?
When the soccer season's over.
When the soccer season's over.
When does that get over?
Oh, well, which league are you talking about?
Go here, over.
There you have it, last league just ended championship. This is a new agenda.
Ballpark. Week, two weeks?
Before I leave office, how to say so.
I like it. Okay, thank you. Not you leaving office, but you getting that stuff. Thank you. So... So, okay, so there's that, we can cross that off. And the other thing is, maybe we could talk real quick before we get to Shane, if that's okay, just on the dues and the AOC dues. Have a chance to look at what the dues, the requested dues are. And Commissioner Prentice, I know if you could weigh in on this, I'd appreciate that as well, knowing. And I have a question about the veterans' dues. If you look at the veterans' fund dues, which are voluntary, that's $3,411. And I was trying to take a look at what the narrative for that is, and it's to help support these 1,000 veterans. Income from this assessment funds, works on veterans' issues. And we're working on veterans' issues, and we also have, I guess, a glut of funds that the counties are not often able to even completely implement at the county level. So what are they actually doing with that $3,000? Do you know?
Yes, it's our outreach with working for Veterans Affairs developing. And when you say a glut of dollars that we're not using?
Yeah, did you read the article about the, we've got these federal dollars to be used for veteran services, and the counties are having a hard time finding stuff to?
Well, no, we did set up a program through the veterans group at AOC. Well, Mitch at ODVA set it up, but it was basically a gift out to the counties to help fund part-time people to assist our veterans' service officers so they could get more and more of our veterans enrolled. We have, well, we've lost a few this last couple of years. Yamp Hill County had a total of, over the last two years, 12 veteran suicides. We have, and then we've lost three of our World War II veterans. We are a little over 9,000, actually about 9,300 veterans in Yamp Hill County as of right now. And a lot of those veterans have not or are not receiving the benefits that they should be. And we just need more outreach, and that outreach needs to come from us reaching out to them. And so that was part of what this money was intended to be used. Now, I don't know what DHS, or Veteran Service Officer reports through DHS, through Silas, but that connectivity, I'm not that certain how that's working, but.
So we hired that, we have another?
We do have another part-time person.
Who's doing it, but why are we paying AOC $3,000 to do that?
To have a veterans, a specific veterans committee and working with ODVA to find and provide more services to all of our veterans statewide. Veterans benefits, we gave $59 million to this county last year, just this county. Last year, it benefits the veterans. The more of those veterans we reach out to and we connect with, we get receiving their benefits, the more it benefits our entire economic system throughout the county. So paying to have our people at AOC focused on veterans affairs, helping to pay for Andy's salary, working on that, I think, is certainly economically viable. That's my take on it.
I guess my take is, Agent Two, and I agree with Commissioner Prentice. I think Andy does a lot of things, does a lot of the legislature regarding veteran programs. Now, we have a wonderful veterans program and veteran services in the county, but I think some of those services really are kind of fruition from some of the work that AOC and Andy's done with ODVA and done with the legislature. So it's something that I think is well worth it. And, you know, I was asked to serve, as far as dues goes, I was asked to serve by the past president. I guess now, yeah, now he's the past president of AOC. This coming year on a new dues committee. Because there's a lot of counties who realize the way the dues are structured just really don't make sense. And so I think that one of the goals next year, as we do the new, with AOC, the new policy changes and fiscal changes and everything, is to really understand, you know, what dues go where and how we fund dues. And should it be one inclusive dues? Should it be less of the optional dues? Or should there be more optional dues?
Well, to that point, Commissioner, I agree. It should be one, AOC should have a dues, and that should cover everything. How this veterans' dues came about was, veterans was not a separate part of AOC up until about four years ago, five years ago, the year before I came on. It was a subset. And they had enough interest that they created a separate department or committee. And that's when they said, well, in order to do that, we're gonna need some additional money. And so they structured that with that separate pot of money for veterans. I agree that we should have one payment to AOC, and AOC should then manage those, their operation with those funds. Every county in the state has veterans in it, and so there should not be a separate dues structure.
Well, and I think that's one of the issues, I think, for those that elect to pay that voluntary fund. I think a lot of the counties that don't pay that voluntary fund, they get advantage of a lot of that anyway. So I think that's, because all counties take advantage of it, so.
Sure, because we work directly with ODVA.
Federal lands everything.
The last three years, we've been present at every one of our meetings, and we've developed some good relationships. And ODVA has provided some real significant benefits to our veterans. So don't disagree that that separate pot shouldn't be there. But I am very much in favor of including that in our payment for our dues. But I think it does warrant working. If you're gonna be serving on that dues committee, then that should be one of the things that should come out of that, is one number that every county pays, and however that's based on population or square miles.
There's a lot of the dues.
Let's do it on square miles instead of population. Get some of those eastern counties to make up on money.
So I'm just, I mean, that's, I think, a whole separate discussion. You'll probably be taking that up about the whole. I like to see the breakdown, because there were a couple of things we opted not to fund, and then we found out how important it was, and we decided to. But we're talking about $25,000. Now, this, to go back to the veterans' fund, I have an article here that says some Oregon counties are having a hard time spending the money they got for veteran services after Measure 96. They said that we've got this great influx of money, according to the ODVA director, Kelly Fitzpatrick. The counties are operating on this money, and.
We got $50,000 in Yamp Hill County, if you want to know of our share of that money.
Okay, but what he's saying is, don't, if some counties are not spending the money, or if we're, if we're, we have money, I just, I guess the question I had was, is this something that, is it wise for us to be spending this money for AOC veterans when we're getting money directly from ODVA?
Well, we are getting money directly from ODVA through the lottery funds. That's where those dollars came from. And the, what the AOC should be doing, and what we have attempted to do, and are still attempting to do, is help counties develop programs to spend that money. That's the purpose of the AOC's Veterans Committee. And those counties that are willing to take advantage of some of the ideas that are being floated, and they're spending those dollars. Some, they don't, we have counties out there that share one veteran service officer for five counties. And so those are the counties that are having difficulty.
Yeah, and I think, Ma'am, you bring up a good point. Because I know there's a lot, there's four voluntary, I think, or five voluntary dues. There's one, two, three, four voluntary dues. With the new accounting structure and everything that AOC isn't fully in place, and one of the reasons for the dues committee, the budget committee, is to look at the actual report, so not on a, just a once-a-year basis, that the counties are aware of all of the dues and where they really go and what programs they're really used on. Because even if you look at the general dues, we really don't, counties really don't have an idea of what that really goes so. So part of the whole thing is to provide more feedback through reports to the counties, and what does all your money go for? And I think veterans' dues is one of those, you know. It was very brief of what the description was.
Right.
But I think that's one of the things that's gonna be developed, is what is that money being spent for?
Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to go over that and see.
I think next year will be a whole different conversation.
So I would put that on your agenda for next year to see how much Commissioner Olson got done during this year.
Okay, the pressure's on.
Pressure's on.
All righty, so we did that. I guess Shane, we go.
Sorry, Ma'am, just to clarify, you'll vote items 1, 2, and 5 to the consent agenda for Thursday?
Correct.
Good question.
Thank you.
You all done yet? Have a lot of agrees yet?
We're getting there.
Please do. Shane is here. Thank you for your patience, and he's going to give us.
Yeah, we can power that.
I have it.
Powered down.
We need to call the help desk.
My team.
Just need to turn it on.
Yeah, come on, come on.
Do we need lights, dim the lights, or are we good?
Hey, we should be good. All right. I guess we did this.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. So I'm going to present the Information Technology Quarterly Update. So let's begin. So we finalized the website migration. We moved everything to a different server, for security reasons. And any more information on that? We were happy to meet one-on-one to discuss in more detail. We upgraded our VMware host to a new software version. That's basically our entire virtualization infrastructure. That hosts, holds all our county information, our files, folders, data, everything. So that was nice to keep up the latest version. We assisted the tax assessor with a tax rule turn, primarily Card and Jill, working great with Derek's team, and went, I think, fairly smooth overall.
That news software system worked well?
Yes, actually did. And I think, you know, we let go of the Lain County support a year early, just because I think, you know, the hard work that Derek's group has done, I think in combination with, you know, Jill and Todd, I think it's been a great group effort for knowledge transfer and being able to maintain that ride, so far so good. Working with the sheriff's office on investigating a new dog licensing software. And right now, we're kind of just really in the discovery phases, just looking at different vendors right now. We're kind of looking at one right now, just going through, getting our documentation, seeing what that might look like, and then I'm sure that'll have to come up for approval at some stage. But right now, it's just collecting the statement of order, the project plan, the costs, all that and stuff, and so.
Now, would this allow, because we talked about the other jurisdictions being able to be involved in this and do their own licensing via that same program?
Yeah, that's part of the kicking of the tires with the different versions of software that they've been looking at, was having that in mind. So whether that's something, a lot of that has to do where it's hosted or where it's sitting, and some of the security, you know, and issues with how the outside jurisdictions access, you know. So that's something that, sorry, Shane, this is your opportunity.
No, I appreciate that. No, continue.
You know, Shane, one other question is, you're investigating that. Are we also looking at software that potentially has, gives us the capability of doing other kind of licensing? So if we want, I don't know if business, I'll just say business licensing for it.
They have their business licenses.
No, I know we don't, but I'm using that just as an example. If we wanted to have a business license, and we implemented a business license, are you considering looking 10, 15 years in the future, software with this dog license that will allow us to put other kind of licenseings on it? Or is this strictly just for dogs?
Another good question. This one's strictly for dogs. I mean, it's really curtailed just for that specific model. In fact, one of the things, one of the products we're looking at is Helion, which is something that Brian Van Bergen uses over at clerk's office. And so they just happen to have a dog licensing software in their fleet of products.
Okay, that answers my question.
So we're looking at that. And so far, it's looking good. But again, it's really coming up with the business requirements of what they want. The sheriff's office expectation is helping to roll this out and then gathering all the costs. So that's really the stage we're at right now, so. Migrating databases off over SQL servers. We're getting really close to being, to be able to retire some of those. We had a goal of actually December, but we had to kind of hold off a little bit just because, as you'll see later on here, we're working with Wycom and the city on a project that we kind of need to leave things as is, and then we'll kind of look back in the new year, circle back, and get some of these older servers retired out. CAT implementation, that's the project. That stands for Computer-Assisted Dispatch. That's the software that Wycom uses, and that affects, obviously, us, police cars. And this is quite a large project, it's going on for a while. We're, again, working with Wycom and the city on this. The goal line was last week, it was a big deal, because police cars, everything, it was like 5:00 on the 12th of December that hopefully everybody was connecting, could enter cases and look up things, and through the DMV, all those sorts of things.
And they had to put up with a major critical incident at the same time.
Yeah, exactly. Overall, I have to say, I think it went really well. It's like any large project, you're gonna have some issues. And, you know, we just had a follow-up meeting today, and Wycom's really good about looking into this all together, and we're working together as a group and logging our incidents and kind of walk, you know, going through this together. And so far, so good. You know, some reporting stuff we're working on right now, as well as a few little bugs here and there. But I think overall, it went fairly smooth, so. Davis Moore Building, working with some various project managers from Health and Human Services, and working closely with maintenance and really Arable is preparing equipment for the connectivity piece, and then any other IT equipment they might need, such as, you know, projectors, TVs, light shows, things like that. I think those are, a lot of these projects have gone really smooth. We really, I think, stepped it up on our communication, you know, as a group within various departments. We tend to meet, you know, at least every second week, and as we get closer, we sometimes wrap that up. But just that communication meeting at the building seems to really help, because you can do that walkthrough and kind of, sometimes, you know, more questions will come up. And we did that at Cur, you know, worked well, and we're kind of moving forward with that model. So I think that works really good.
I think one of the big things, Shane, is the fact that you put all the information out to, you know, collecting in your office at the, so everybody has access to it now. It's disseminated on a basis where everybody's involved, and that's why that wire pool and T system is making better, so.
Appreciate it. Tableau Server App Man Training. Tableau, of course, is one of our data analysis tools we have. So I had two people out of his take, we did it online, and it worked well. We had two people sit in on that, so it went well. Agile Data Warehouse Design Training. We sent one person from IT, and there were three people from Health and Human Services that went up to Seattle for some training. Essentially, that was just, it was, the class is really the step-by-step, a step-by-step guide of collecting data warehousing and business intelligence requirements. And then you're turning those into a high-performing dimensional model, if you will. What that really means in layman terms, it's just, it's really just bringing everybody together and all the stakeholders, whether it be, you know, database designers, end users. And it's a process that you step through together to ask all the right questions, to really be able to come up with the best data model. And that's really how you're gonna store the data that will best facilitate reporting. A lot of times, when you have, like, transactional systems, those are. A lot of times, when you have, like, transactional systems, those are really heavily geared for collecting transactions. And a lot of times, when you try to report off those, you come a point, there comes a point in time where you experience a lot of slowness because of all the heavy lifting you have to do to massage the data to get it, to present it right. So, a lot of times, what you'll do is start offloading that data from the transactional system to a data warehouse, where you can then just kind of change the arrangement of the data, if you will, so it's better for reporting.
And then report off that.
And report off that, exactly. And then you're not taxing resources on your transactional system either. So, that's kind of what that is. Christina Malai, working closely with her, reached out to Layton County a few times. They've been very successful with using this model, and so it's good to be able to reach out to some of the counties and look at their journey. And so, we hope to leverage that more, and we're going to still continue to work together as a group to kind of move forward and put this to use. Migration of SSRs, that's SQL Server Reporting Services. That's, really just goes in line with the migrating of the databases off older versions. So, we're getting much closer on that as well. And that, along with migrating older databases, I hope to have that done in the next few months, where at least be able to retire one of those. Irma Implementation, that stands for Electronic Records Medical Application. That's basically just a browser-based application for the management of inmate medical records. And so, we work closely with the jail and outside vendor, and a lot of our role was to, again, procure some equipment. We provided some desktops, scanners, things like that. And then probably one of the biggest pieces, we had to have a programmer assist with some tie-ins to ATMs, which is our jail management software, so there was some communication there. So, that actually went live last week as well. And so, I've seen some follow-up emails, and, you know, just a few little things here and there, but it was, it was overall an effort on everybody's part of jail, everybody in. So, I think pretty, pretty successful. Office 365 Implementation, you've probably seen a lot of emails on that. It's keeping Mr. Burns very busy over in my office.
And the help desk?
Yeah, the help desk. So, yeah, he's, full steam ahead, and so far, so good. He's been starting to send some emails out to the managers. We're starting to get to that point. The big thing, the key, we're still on schedule, looking good for the beginning of February to have that all converted, so more, more to come on that, but so far, so good. Computer deployment, I put new here. We're looking at, this is really just a process improvement initiative on our part. We wrote a formal procedure, and we were looking just to be a little bit more proactive and better with how we deploy our replacement dues. We created one report, because we found, when we actually looked at the process, there was people using multiple reports, which is dangerous. So, we have it narrowed down to one report, and then the procedure, there's actually tier one and tier two involved in the process. Tier one runs the report, generates the tickets, and then tier two kind of takes over. But where we want to get to is a state where we're actually running it like three months in advance, so we can prepare, like, taking consideration of B-time for getting the equipment in, and that way, we can be on top of it as far as getting equipment out. And right now, we are a little behind, so we're not really, we're not really implementing this just yet, but this coming Friday, I actually, when we sit down with one of my desktop support, I asked him to put together a formal plan, as more or less a catch-up plan for a backlog, so that we can see kind of how many resources we're going to take. I think we've given him a seventy-five percent allocation rate for his daily work to focus on that, so what does that pencil out? How far, how long is it going to take us to catch up? So that then we can measure ourselves weekly, but then we'll also know, you know, if the time isn't acceptable, the timeframe, then we, you know, we have to figure out, well, we need more resources, and that's what we do. So, at least we can have some kind of idea, so to get caught up, and then once we get caught up, then this new process should, you know, kick in, and hopefully, hopefully it'll be better. Expanded Wi-Fi coverage at Evans. That's just, we added more wireless access points. We have a great piece of software that we now use that can give us, you know, we have built the floor plans, and it'll kind of give us projection and placement, and how many wireless access points we need. In fact, there, we had to double it up, just because of all the concrete and a lot of the barriers there. So, we're in a better state. Jail Cameras RFP, just a joint effort, working with admin, working with Joe Moore from Maintenance and the jail. And I think, I think we have another follow-up meeting this week, so we're all kind of just, we have an initial Phase One RFP we're looking at, and so we're all kind of getting our, together, putting our inputs, and trying to come up with a good final product. Network Administration, administrative position filled. So, finally, we've got somebody in that chair, and his name's Christopher Garcia. He's been with us a couple of months now. He's doing well, and we're glad to have him. He's staying in nicely with the team. Help Desk Tickets. So, from September eighteenth to December eighteenth, we closed two thousand eighty-one tickets, and we also closed another two thousand seven hundred and eighteen tasks. What we've done is, we've kind of divided our work into kind of three lots right now. We have issues, which we helped us tickets, we have tasks, and we have projects. And our definition is, an issue is something that's not working or broken. And a task would be something that's not classified, ticket that's not classified as an issue, that takes less than fifteen minutes to fix, and the project is, a ticket that's not classified as an issue, but it takes longer than fifteen minutes. So, the fifteen-minute thing, we're kind of toying with, you know, whether it should be an hour or a lot, that, that's kind of a work in progress. This was just something we talked about, and we felt comfortable with. And I'm starting to look a little, a little more closely at the data. I think you asked a great question last time about kind of our top issues, so I went ahead and kind of looked at that. And so far, for this last quarter, we had most of our issues, we either email, proximity cards, or we had software other. And email issues could be anything from having to rebuild a profile, somebody can't get in, or, you know, hey, my mail's not sorting correctly, I can't find something, I'm searching for something, I can't find it. Those are the types of issues we might get. For proximity cards, a lot of that is, you know, lost or broken. I think that right now, they're putting new in there, which I got to question that, because that might be more of a task than an issue. So, it's kind of good now that we're getting into this data, because now we can start seeing where we need to, where we need to make some tweaks. And the software other is primarily not, like, it's not standard software, like, you know, Office or something. It's kind of a one-off application, maybe just one department uses. It seems like we might be just the go-to, in some cases, we're able to help, it's something basic, or we have to point them to a vendor or something, it just depends. And that's another one I kind of, I kind of want to look at, because software other, it doesn't really tell you much in some ways, so I got to figure it out. So, right now, I'm looking at all the different categories we have, and I'm kind of making sure, I'm kind of, I'm taking a look to make sure it makes sense, and then, of course, living back with everybody to make sure we're all asking the same questions and grouping it right, because obviously, if you don't do that, it's not going to report very well. But anyway, so those were our top three main issues for this time. So, anyway, that's what I got for you.
So, two thousand eighty-one Help Desk Tickets. Of those, my calls resulted in two thousand eighty-one. When Michaela's not here.
Yeah, have you, how many tickets did Kayla, uh, Kayla close?
One thousand.
Good person on our board.
It's like, how many did she...
Keep us from getting to the help. And then I go over to Help Desk, they thank me, because they say, our call log was leaving her.
Just between Stan and Mary.
There are good things with Kayla. That's awesome.
I don't believe them. She's a part-naker.
Well, thank you, Shane. You've been busy and...
Yeah, great job, Shane.
Doing a great job. Thank you.
It's exciting to try to start getting into the data now, that we're starting to look at categories, and, you know, metrics, and measuring ourselves and stuff, and hopefully at some point, I can get more onto the business leaders.
That's where the rubber meets.
It's nice to have a system at a point where you can go there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where, when you walked in, you had a real mess, and it's nice now to be at a point where everybody's kind of driving down the same road, and they know where the road is.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting. I think, I'm looking forward to, like, we have, as part of our camera project, planning new Help Desk Tickets, so I'm looking forward to that at some point. That's really going to make a difference, too. But it is what it is right now, and so we make the best of it, and we did this tool, we're still able to do some things, and we need to, we need to do that and keep moving ahead.
Yeah, I think Stan said earlier, the thing I appreciate the most, and I know all the department heads appreciate the most, is being much more proactive on things, involving the departments and the workers and the employees much earlier in the process, instead of just keeping it on there and saying, here's what you got now, well, this isn't what I want, and this isn't what I needed, you know? It's like, it's a big difference.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Question, I noticed when I go to the county website, and I go to departments, you try to get to follow, and they don't all show up. Did anybody ever see that happen? Where you can't get to like...
On a regular PC or web, on the router, his phone, or your PC?
On my, yeah, computer here.
I've had other issues, I haven't had that issue.
Where you, where, unless, like, I try to get to public works, someone's calling me, and I want the public works phone number to give them, and I try to drop it down and get to it, and I'm not getting, all the departments won't show up, and then drop down...
It's not like it's scrolling down, and...
No, it's not scrolling down. It's just sort of stopping midway, and I can't find...
Sounds like operator.
Yeah. I needed these two people having that problem, then I could look into it.
Or you need one person having the problem twice.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. I'll let Michaela look at it, and then...
Then it'll be fixed.
And, or, you know, because I...
She'll show you where it is.
Show me...
I've seen, you know, I've kind of seen a similar thing on different pages, like, sometimes a meeting page, but it's not all the time that you're scrolling down through the list of all the meetings that have the agendas and the thing.
Okay.
And you get down to the bottom, and all of a sudden, you just can't scroll down anymore.
Can't keep going.
Trust me, I have not heard that. So, if that's happening, you have to let us know.
Yeah, certainly.
I think it's the migration of new web server.
I guess the only thing before Shane leaves, you know, that I would add, is one thing that we have been working on, and you'll see it when we do budget instructions this year. One of the challenges that we've had in IT is there's a lot of departments that have, you know, projects or ideas or software implementation ideas that they'd like to bring forward, and sometimes IT is not necessarily in the know or in the loop on some of these projects coming down. So, one of the things that we're really hoping to do is similar to like we've done with facilities, is formalizing that process a little bit more, and actually having project request forms, so at least, at least going into the year, into the new budget year, Shane at least has an idea that some of these projects are coming down, so he can prioritize the resources. And, you know, we've had, some of the projects, you know, it's a bullet up here, and it doesn't really, you know, it's an understatement, you know, because, you know, you look at something like the assessor's office software, you know, that's been two programmers, pretty much dedicated to that office, helping to implement a number of projects, and that's fifty percent of your programmers that we have there. And so, being able to pencil out and plan a little more effectively in some of these projects that are coming down. The CAD project, we knew that was coming, but that occupied a desktop support for quite a bit of time, and that's helped contribute to the computer replacement backlog that we have now. It's because we had a desktop support specialist that was updating MDTs and getting those installed in cars, so we'd be, you know, compliant with the new CAD upgrade. And so, so that's something I just wanted to add, you know, with all the great work that IT is doing, is also looking to get our projects a little better organized, and getting the departments thinking ahead a little bit, because it might seem like a small thing, hey, I'd like to implement a new software this year, a new dog licensing software, not that that's the issue, but as an example, and not really recognize that the amount of staff time that really does go into that, when you have a programmer, net admin, all the impact on our team.
Well, I think it's just not Shane's time to deliver, and I think you bring out a very good point, and if you don't identify those upfront, all of a sudden, sometimes you get into the budget, and realize, here's something that has a much bigger impact on the budget than we ever thought it would have.
Right.
Because it wasn't identified, a front work could be properly budgeted for.
Right. So, that's something I just wanted to say, is something we've been talking about for quite some time, and so it's something you'll see with budget instructions come next month.
It's going to help with the resource allocation, too, because I think that's the other trick, balancing what I have for capital plans, as well as being able to service other departments, and knowing ahead of time, and seeing what my resource allocation looks like for the year, you know, for the company.
What percentage is in term, what percent is...
Yeah. What do I have left over? And then if something else comes in, then I have to make some decisions.
Shifting prior, or are you...
Is it shifting? It goes a hole, you go upside, you hire, there's just lots of questions to ask.
Well, see how quickly that assessor's office worked, and it only took them eight years.
Just a couple of brains.
It's a good group effort. I know, well...
Thank you, Shane.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your hard work, and thank you, Shane, and you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for opportunity to present.
Thank you. So, we'll do Commissioner updates, Commissioner...
Yeah, the only, the only chair that I really have. Why did I step out?
Thank you very much.
I'm needed in.
Is there a soccer game?
No.
Soccer game?
An early, an early family Christmas event, and I'm...
It's a soccer party. It's a soccer family party.
I'm a soccer party. Going on, report...
Thank you, bye, Shane.
Going on, report on, I spent all morning with a group of three different groups in the city community development regarding the new three-mile lane, or what they call the Highway Youth Team Project. It's a project that the city is basically undertaking, but it impacts ODOT, it'll impact the county, it impacts MDP, from, because we have a lot of our property, which isn't in the city's UGB right now, it's agricultural, on the south side, there may be possibilities that they may be wanting to bring that into the UGB. And so, it's a big project, and it's really looking at everything from the bridge, the three-mile lane bridge out to the airport, and how the whole thing is going to develop over the next twenty years, and who's going to develop what, and what the development standards, the traffic is, the transportation is, and they got a TGM grant for that, and actually, got two TGM grants for that. So, I sat in on the first series of meetings this morning, and it was really interesting, some of the comments, or says like, oh, you know, we did this fifteen years ago. Well, yeah, but things have changed in fifteen years.
The ownership of the property has a...
Yeah, some of it's still the same.
Yeah.
But some of it has changed, and some of it's, some of it's going to change within the next probably three months, so...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes?
Commissioner, please.
Uh, no, except I have a meeting at three thirty in Cobb.
I'll be real quick.
So, I got to get over to Salem.
Okay.
Except that if there's much in the Cobb building left, I don't know, maybe you saw the email from Sean.
What?
They, they had about a third of the offices destroyed last night.
No way!
Wind and rain blew through there, took out part of the roof.
What?
Salem had, what, sixty-three or sixty-four?
Yeah, they had, anyway, the Cobb offices, most of the staff's been sent home to work from home, and others have just been put on cargo and building.
What? And you're going down there?
Well, the conference room is still...
It's part of the, that's the only thing that's happened, because it's at the south end of the building.
Oh, wow.
So, not we, or meeting, but, anyway, so I'm going to head for that, but let me see. Still have to be...
Yeah.
Won't be my last one.
No, it'll be. Just real quick, still looking for an executive director at YCAP, and we have some really, really good people applying. Silas, I asked him to speak with the executive director, he got reached, to see if they can do some merging of programs and helping out, and that's working out. And Ron Noble, I had a meeting with him yesterday, and he is advancing the two bills, the DHS